One thirty?
Yeah, we're good. I may not be as, uh, counting me, because I've got my grandparents' day. Grandparents' Day at the school. I'm not gonna miss it.
I would go do that.
That would, that would not be, um, that would really get ripped. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call the order of this public meeting of the Board of Johnson County Commissioners on this Monday, September ninth, two thousand twenty-four, at ten o'clock a.m. If you'd care to, please pray with us, and then we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Will you bow with me for a moment of prayer, please? Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this wonderful stretch of weather we're experiencing. Dear Lord, today we will pray for those who have not come yet to know you. We pray, dear Lord, that they will come to know you and share in your love and healing and care and comfort that we all enjoy in our lives each and every day. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands on the nation of God, in whose law we are liberated and in justice from all. Thank you. Comcast presentation regarding NLC round three, if someone's present.
Yes. Hello, Commissioner. Good morning. Yes, can you all hear and see me well?
It's, yeah, I think we can make it a little better, maybe. I don't know how our volume is here, but I can hear you. I just want to make sure the public can hear you. And if you would just state your name for the record, please, sir.
Certainly will. Good morning, everyone. Again, my name is Jared Moore. I'm with Comcast Government Affairs. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak very, very briefly to the Board here and to all the constituents that are present today about the newest Indiana broadband expansion initiative. And so, again, thank you again for this opportunity. I know myself and my director, Matt Kelly, a few weeks ago had the opportunity to speak with your county attorney, Adam Gadberry, about NLC round three and the request that we had for additional funding for the build-out in Johnson County as it relates to NLC round three. And Adam did a wonderful job letting us know that the county wouldn't be able to make a determination on that until later on in November, as again, as it relates to our expansion and build-out for round three in Johnson County. And so, we've already kind of distinguished that and would certainly love to have a further conversation, uh, Commissioners, later on in November when that that ask could kind of be more detailed, have more of a detailed conversation, rather. So, that's kind of already been made clear to us here at Comcast, but I did want to give also a kind of a brief overview of the newest broadband initiative expansion called the Broadband Equity Access and Deployment Program, which you might always know or heard as ASB. It is an eight-hundred-and-sixty-million-dollar investment within the state of Indiana that gives us a wonderful opportunity to address any and all remaining unserved and underserved addresses within the state. And obviously, that includes Johnson County. And this gives us a way to, again, to address any areas or any addresses within your county that has not been able to obtain adequate broadband access, whether in no regard or in a limited regard. And so, this allows us to work hand-in-hand with counties to address in detail and more specifically those addresses in your counties that need more broadband access. And what's unique about B is that unlike any other, any other of the other grant process and programs, where you all would just generally submit a letter of intent or a letter of support, B allows us to work hand-in-hand, and again, more specifically with the counties, to address which addresses have not had adequate broadband access and expansion. And so, this would regard us working with organizations, acreage organizations, schools, libraries, whatever you all would find important or beneficial to working with ISPs to address these limited addresses. So, at this moment, we have not received the addresses within Johnson County. We actually should be receiving them in the next few weeks here. And I would love to have a further conversation with you all, if possible, once we receive those addresses within the county, how you all would like to go about addressing that, and what specific funding would be applied to Johnson County specifically. So, I think this is a wonderful opportunity, and many of you probably have already heard of B, but this is a kind of a one-in-a-lifetime opportunity for the state of Indiana to work with the national federal level to really address underserved and unserved addresses that remain within our state and against specific to Johnson County. So, this B conversation is certainly going to be ongoing. I just wanted to kind of give a quick overview and make aware to the Commissioners what this might look like for Johnson County, and hopefully looking forward to working with you all as we move forward to see what addresses we have in the county and what funding we would be given to move and expand even further in Johnson County.
Questions? Currently? I don't think we have questions or anything at this point in time. Of course, as we move forward and look at those areas, too. Will you be providing to us a map of those addresses?
Most definitely, Commissioner. Again, once we receive those addresses in the next few weeks, we've been told by the end of September, I will certainly send those maps over to you that will address every detailed address within the county. And from there, we can have a further conversation in detail of how you all would like to address it and how we would move forward, if possible.
Sounds good. Appreciate that, sir.
Yeah, thank you all. And again, Adam has my information. If you all have any questions beforehand or as we on, as we go forward, certainly let me know.
We appreciate that, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Thank you again for the opportunity.
Have a great day, sir.
Thanks, Sheriff.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any discussion? We good? Moving on?
If you want to have discussion, you can.
You, I'm ready, good. Do I? Do you want any discussion, or you want to just move on?
No, I, I don't think there's any need for discussion until we have those addresses that they're gonna provide. Then we can see how that compares with what information we currently have.
Wanted to make the opportunity available, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Under elected officials and department heads, auditor approval engagement letter with Baker Tilly, U.S. L.O.P. for gap two thousand twenty-four.
I'm afraid we have an option on this one.
Not really.
I'm gonna move to approve. Second.
Have a motion and second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. B has been stricken under parks. I assume it's still stricken from, removed by legal. C, Health Department approval to apply for the two thousand twenty-five Indiana Breast Cancer Screening and Diagnostic Grant and also approval of WSI. Oh, never mind. Go ahead. I'll let you do that one.
Hi, Betsy Sweridge, Director, Health Department. The first one is just our annual application for the breast cancer awareness grant.
Move to approve. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Now then, next one. Approval of WSI.
Yeah, the next one is, uh, for cameras for the Child Advocacy Center that's gonna be moving into the old Health Department.
I'll move to approve on that one. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Highway, approval and execution of financial commitment letters and approval execution support letter.
Good morning, Daniel Johnson, Highway Engineer. Uh, yes, our first one regarding the financial commitment letters. We, I had a typo in my memo. We don't have three. We actually have two funding applications that we're gonna submit to the MPO. The first being the, both of these are resubmital, resubmittals of applications we have sent in prior years. The first is the Smith Valley Road improvements between Peterman Road and Reston Road intersections. This project would not include the two intersections. Those would be handled through other, other projects. This is just the road segment in between. And then the second is the, is a resubmittal of the school zone flashing signs there for thirteen schools in the unincorporated areas of the county. Both of these are reapplications. The school zone flasher application will be requesting safety funding. So, in terms of the split, local and state funding split, that'd be a ninety-ten, where the ten percent would, would be the local share. Our consultants are still wrapping up the cost estimates and application documents for these. I'll be able to send you copies of the finalized cost estimates once, once those are completed.
I'm gonna move to approve both of them.
Second that. You might want to just say what the totals are.
Okay. Um, the, I'll start with the school zone flashing assemblies, because that one, the cost estimate was completed. So, in terms of construction cost, the estimate that we're looking at for that is one million, two-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand dollars for construction. And I guess the total project, including design as well as construction inspection, approximately a little over one-point-five-million dollars for that project. For the Smith Valley Road segment, that one, again, they're still wrapping up the design or the application and est- so, the, what information that I provided to you in the memo was just an assumed estimated increase over that prior application. So, construction-wise for that segment, we're looking over, over fifteen-million dollars in the construction cost. In terms of the local share and state share, due to the size of the project, we won't be able to apply for, at the usual eighty-percent, twenty-percent split. It would just, it wouldn't be feasible with the amount of funding that, that we are competing against with all the other local agencies in the area. So, we would be requesting five-point-five-million dollars of state funding. Five million of that would be towards construction, and five-hundred-thousand of that would be towards the inspection costs.
Thank you.
Yes.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Daniel.
And then, for the second one, this is somewhat unrelated note. It is for the, the MPO call for projects. This is as a support letter from the county for the City of Franklin's project. They are applying to do intersection improvements at the intersection of Hurricane Road and Three Hundred North.
Move to approve. That's a roundabout, in case anybody was wondering.
Another roundabout.
I, I was just gonna say, the two designs that, that I got in my packet here, that, that second one looks like they got a football feel in the middle there. What, what kind of design is that?
Oh, that, I guess, I don't know if it's the official technical term, but that's referred to as a peanut roundabout.
Peanut.
Yes.
Yeah, I can see the resemblance.
So, the benefits there, it kind of decreases the footprint of, of the roundabout. Minimizes how much earthwork and impacts to the adjacent properties.
And just, I don't think I've ever seen one like that, because there wasn't one that exists.
We could put a fence around it and make pickleball courts there.
Yeah, we could. There's some restrictions on that elevation-wise.
Right.
That's gonna, this is gonna help out with the footprint, to keep it a little bit smaller footprint, not get into retaining walls and everything else in there. So.
It's just kind of different.
It's unique. It's, it's unique.
We like unique.
There is one in Johnson County at the intersection of Pennington and Hornaday, Hornaday Drive, right next to the Senator of High School campus. That was constructed two years ago.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
I'm good.
Motion and a second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Daniel. Board of Commissioners, ordinance number two thousand twenty-four dash oh dash six, ordinance authorized distribution and/or expenditure of the proceeds of Johnson County's grant from the American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand twenty-one. Subject is Independence Park Pickleball Courts.
I move to approve, and then I'll give you an update on that if you need.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Go ahead, sir.
Uh, we have selected the construction company for the construction of this facility. We weren't able to get the, um, the surface put down for the courts theirself. The pigment and the striping this year, so Wes Harrison thought it would be best if maybe we just held off on construction of the whole project until the spring of next year. Rather than put it down, at least the asphalt, and let it winter, one winter needlessly. So, right now, the plan, the contractors agreed to hold his price to the spring of next year. So, that, right now, that's the plan, to start construction early next spring as soon as the weather is favorable. And he has a completion date, I think, of the end of May, which, obviously, we would extend a little bit if there'd be a need for that.
I think with the, what's, just what's going on out there for now, though, that, that should be really, shouldn't be too bad to do. We probably, I would think, Wes, maybe look at March, I don't know, start of that, possibly, whenever the, in that area somewhere, as soon as the weather breaks.
Yeah.
And they'll be playing pickleball in no time. Have a motion and a second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash oh dash seven, an ordinance authorizing distribution and/or expenditures of the proceeds of the Johnson County's grant from the American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand twenty-one. Subject, Training Center Bridge.
Move to approve. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further?
Uh, you might explain a little bit of this, um, what it is, so the public knows.
This would be a walkover bridge that's, would be east of the Training Center, going across the drainage ditch over to the, the highway department area. And what this would be is for overflow parking for the, not only the Training Center, but anything else that would be connected to, to what's going on back on the facility back there. Much needed. We just don't have enough room, don't have enough parking space there. The Training Center has become a focal point of a lot of different trainings and, and things that we're bringing in. And the advantage to that is, and I want everyone to know, the advantage to being able to utilize that Training Center is a lot of the times when we offer our facility for these training seminars, that we, we get that training for free, which is a big, big deal for us in being able to bring in a lot of different things. I know the animal shelter's got a lot of stuff going on out there of needed training. Sheriff's Office always does, but it, it's being utilized by many other departments and areas. So, just something really needed, something that we've been very fortunate and blessed to be able to put together and have. So, look forward to that moving forward and, and even more use of the Training Facility to help our, our, all our constituents.
That's perfect.
Good with that?
Perfect. Just wanted everybody to know what it was for, not just building the bridge over the River Cry.
Bridge to nowhere?
Yeah.
Yeah, I get it. Anyway, have a motion and a second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Now, a warrant approval of construction contract for the, the Independence Park Pickleball Courts project.
I, I move to approve that which I prophesized in my earlier comments.
Gave us a little tidbit.
And I would second that, being with All-Star Paving Incorporated. So.
Submitted, understood. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Four and five have been stricken, stricken, removed by legal. We don't want to argue with them.
They're on legal.
Yeah, I'm gonna stay on that, that package for a while. Number six, ratification of employee handbook change, holiday pay.
Move to approve. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Does that work for you, Ms. Auditor?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Always here to plead. Employee handbook changes.
Move to approve. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further?
That would take too long to explain all that, so.
And it changes continually.
It changes every year. We make updates every year.
Do you want us to run through them briefly? Or we can put it in an email later?
I can put it in an email. It'll be a while. Lot of red on there. Not too much this time.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Two thousand twenty-five holiday schedule for approval?
We had that modified last time, so I'm going to move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Two thousand twenty-five Commissioner meeting schedule.
Move to approve. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Acceptance of lowest court award of contract pursuant to IC thirty-six dash one dash twelve dash five for concrete coating on curbs at the courthouse.
I'm gonna say we need to move to approve, so we don't get any more complaints.
Second, and we're approving HTH Contracting LLC for five-thousand-eight-hundred dollars.
I love this, you guys. This is great.
Any further? Hearing none, all, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Ratification of engagement letter with Valbridge Property.
Move to approve. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Amendment, approval of amendment to the four-fifty-seven-B plan for employees.
Move to approve. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Oh, I love this one. Appointment of hearing officer and hearing date, Pleasant Township Appeal. The hearing officer would be Commissioner West. The appeal hearing will be nine-ten, two thousand twenty-four, at ten o'clock a.m.
They write?
It's tomorrow.
Okay. Move to approve, Mr. Weston. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. I, I do want to say, though, Commissioner West did the last one for us and did an excellent job, and I really appreciate that. Your input and all that you did on that, sir. But that's one of those things nobody really wants to do, so.
We're gonna keep building you up, Ron.
Yeah, I appreciate you. I appreciate you doing them.
You know, in, in regard to these hearings for appeal on assistance from the various township trustees, it's something that I, and we all do, take very serious, because these people who make these applications to us for appeal, they are in need. There's just no question about it. They're suffering economically, and they need, need some help. Unfortunately, some, and sometimes, the, the help they're looking for just simply can't be granted because of the statutes that are in place that prohibit funding for some of those needs based on their personal criteria. But it's not something that we take lightly. We're always appreciative of the people who come, and we try to be as considerate of, of their appeal as we can. It's just unfortunate. A lot of people in the county are in need.
And, and with that, and a note to that, I know a lot of times that the township trustees feel like they're kind of at the bottom of the cesspool in political stature, I guess, but I want to thank those trustees for the job that they do. It's, um, it's heart-wrenching a lot of the times, and in a lot of times, it's frustrating of the things that they have to see and, and go through and, and help, try to help provide. So, if you ever see a township trustee, you know, probably most people don't even know who they are, but please thank them for the job that they do. It's, it's an important job, so, and I appreciate them. Under new and old business, the Wagner, Irwin, and Shealy contract is for the council. We need to have some discussion.
Light the fuse.
Whatever. So, the, I guess the discussion would be, and I know we've had a lot of it at the, the past meeting, but the discussion would be as if we would want to move forward in allowing the president of the council to sign and enter into an agreement with Wagner, Irwin, Shealy for a salary study. And we're bringing that back forward as per our obligation that we need to, and we said that we would. So, I'm gonna open up the floor for a discussion and/or a motion to allow that movement.
Well, as we discussed earlier, in my opposition to it, of course, was the fifty-eight-thousand-plus dollars for this study by Wagner, Irwin, and Shealy. And my contention is that this information's readily available through the AIC. And that was my reasoning for not supporting it in the beginning. I, I thought it was, the information was readily available. We have some documentations from other studies going back to two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-two, and as recently as two thousand twenty-four, that the council had gone to Wagner, Irwin, and Shealy and obtained through their services that really support already what they're looking for. The second day of hearings, of course, the council president reiterated her position on salary increases and supplements, and were primarily concerned with the supplement issue on two of our employees. She said that she, she understood our reasoning and our want, and basically kind of supported it, but she was gonna hold the line until the, the council obtained the information to substantuate the, uh, amounts we're looking for to support these two positions. And again, my contention is they've already gotten that in the past, in the two thousand twenty-two salary study and the classifications that were put forth. They did the same thing in two thousand twenty-two, and somewhat in two thousand twenty- They did the same thing in twenty-twenty-two and somewhat in twenty-twenty-four. Again, the information that Wagner, Irwin, and Sheley's gonna bring forward is primarily based on what's in the AIC book again. The only discrepancy that might be in this process would be the classification where our county coordinator is classified. And, uh, I personally would take objection to that classification, but that's something we can debate at the time. So, and I, I'm still not in support of it, but I understand the council does have the right, the council president does have the right to enter into this contract. And I would support her being able to do that, uh, given that she already has this, the authority to do it. But I just wanted to know publicly that I, I do oppose the spending of over fifty-eight thousand dollars for a study that I just don't deem worthy.
And, and I, I also agree with a lot of what Commissioner West said, as I've stated in the past. Uh, but again, uh, wha- all we're doing is we're approving, uh, we're allowing through us, in our approval, to allow the Council President to sign that into, to their budget and their, uh, decision-making process. So with that said, I, I just want to make sure that, uh, everyone understands that, uh, we are not making the decision to sign that contract. We are allowing the Council President to make that decision without contention. Um, and by the statute, really, the most we could do is have contention, so, um, but we want to make that sure that we're, we're understood, that that is not the process that we agree to. We just agree to them being allowed to make that decision, and they, as well they should. Uh, that is not our decision, that is a council decision, so.
I will support that position. So, and I'll leave it at that. I mean, we can debate this all day long.
Yes, we can, but.
I think if the council deems this necessary, then they should be the ones to make that decision.
And they should be held accountable to the decision they make.
I'm not going that far, but I'll just say it's their, their responsibility to make that decision.
Just as we do. We're, we're held accountable to every decision we make also, so, uh, I just don't want to, I don't want anybody to mistake our intent on this. Anyway, do I have a motion?
So I will make a motion to allow the President of the Council to enter into a contract with, I'm gonna leave it at whatever, or should I list Wagner, Irwin, Sheley?
Let them make it.
I would, well, they've already approved from their side of the net specific contract, so it'd just be the contract with Wagner.
Wagner, Irwin, Sheley. I would give them permission to do that.
Second?
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Claims?
Uh, the sheriff's doing such a wonderful job, I just, I just can't find anything anymore.
Did you get a speeding ticket this weekend or something?
I have to say, anything we found in the past ended up being legitimate. Anyway, it's just, some of the names sounded funny, yeah, which.
Yeah, I moved to approve.
Wow, second?
I have a motion in a second. Any further? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Uh, B, Commissioner Minutes, rate twenty-six, was removed and pushed to the nine-twenty-three agenda. Uh, now, under C, any public comment? Please limit to five minutes or less.
I didn't think Bob was public.
Wait for it. Wait for it. My name is Bob Galinsky. Uh, just for the record, I am a county employee. However, I am off duty right now. Uh, so I'm just a public citizen. Um, I did want to, uh, just, uh.
Move that microphone toward you a little bit, sir, please.
I just wanted to, uh, bring to the commissioner's attention and, and the public. We hear so much about, uh, recovery and recovery, uh, missions out there and, and different clinics out there. But I wanted to, uh, bring to light that, uh, I happen to, uh, run a, a mission, uh, for recovery. It's called, uh, Life and Recovery, and we do it out at, uh, the Light Church in Bargersville, and we have all kinds of pamphlets and things like that. We hear so much about, uh, secularism and, and how they want to, uh, and they do help, uh, recovering, uh, addicts. And, uh, there's just so much more involved in recovery, and it's not just, uh, secularism. We have brochures from all kinds of different companies, for-profit companies, and some not-for-profit companies that are out there, uh, you know, with, within the law enforcement realm and the public, uh, seedings and things like that. But we do a, a recovery program out here. It's free, one hundred percent free, truly free program, um, by certified people who, who have a heart to help people. And I just wanted to make sure that the public and you guys all knew that there was something out there, uh, other than just, um, you know, programs out there that are for, for-profit companies. Um, this is truly free, and it's, it's, uh, it's just a way that I believe that, uh, we can bring people back to a, a, a stable life. And there's more to recovery than just drugs and alcohol. There's life that gets us to those points. And, uh, I just really believe that this is something that the public needs to hear and know. Uh, we have, you know, Narcan boxes in all public buildings, uh, all our law enforcement officers carry brochures from different agencies. I just want to make sure that people know there's a difference between secular counseling and Christian counseling and Christian recovery. And that secularism believes that man heals man, okay? And Christian recovery, we believe that God heals man. And there's a big difference, and I just want to make sure that the public knows about these programs. Uh, every Monday, holidays included, every Monday at six PM at the Light Church in Bargersville. And, uh, I have brochures. I'd love to give each one of these one just to have, and if you ever have the opportunity, that anybody in here wants one, anybody wants to have the opportunity to, uh, you know, pass out another brochure to somebody who is in need, please send them that way. It truly is a free program. We don't ask for anything. We don't look for anything. We just look to help people and to get into a, a, a better, stable life. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, sir.
And, uh, just to, in, come into that and, 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 thank you, Bob, for what you do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for what you do there. Um, but we have a, a, a lot of people that are in need in, in a, in a lot of different areas, in a lot of different ways. Uh, and in my eyes, this is just another option for those who feel like they can't find the right place for them. Uh, and this opens up just another option for people that, uh, want the help, uh, not only in the, the recovery area, but also in the spiritual area. And there's nothing wrong with that. It's a choice. It's a free choice that people, uh, can make and, and they can better themselves, uh, and hopefully get, uh, the proper recovery that they're looking for, not that we're looking for, but they're looking for. So, I appreciate that, uh, Bob, bringing that forward, and, uh, I wish you all the success, success in the world, as I do all the recovery entities that we have out there. Uh, we have a true, true, um, horrifying problem out there today. So, uh, I'm for any, anything, anyone that wants to get involved and help those people that are in need, but thank you, uh, for that. Anything else?
I have adjourned. Second?
I have a motion in a second. We're adjourned. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.